And compassion. That we shall be pleased and be pleased with all in the city of San Fernando. That we shall glorify your name to the world through our examples. Almighty being, may your light shine upon this city and our country. And keep us away from all forms of darkness. And that we shall always acknowledge your greatness. For without your presence, nothing will be achieved. Peace and love.
Ego sis bis.
His worship, the Mayor Alderman Junior Reguero, members of council.
We'll begin with omissions and corrections, page one. Page two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. And eight. Could one so move for confirmation, please?
Your worship, members of admin, members of council. I move for the confirmation of the minutes of the third statutory meeting of the 10th San Fernando City Council, held on Tuesday, the 28th of March 2017.
May I have a second?
Your worship, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration. I rise to second the motion. Monri Poonavat.
The motion is then moved by councillor Power, seconded by councillor Wilson. Any abstention, any objection? All in favour? The motion is carried. Matters arising. Page two. Your worship, members of council, members of administration. I like update on 3.2, the illegal, the honour authorised vending at the library corner, please.
Your worship, Madam CEO, members of council, members of administration. Police officers on their patrol to different locations pay periodical checks at this, to this vending. What we're going to do, we have an exercise planned and we're going to communicate at a later date.
Councillor, you satisfied with your explanation?
Your worship, I hope that this exercise is planned with the TTPS because I know we are, we very short staff here. So, and let, continue to let the council be informed of further new plans.
Let's move on, page two, so we move to page three. 3.3.2, Dr Mordali.
Your worship, members of council, members of administration. In particular reference to the bulk waste?
Yes.
Yes, despite our best efforts to try to communicate to the citizens that the clean-up campaign is over, they continue to put out their bulk waste. I urge the members of council to speak to your worshippers, to call Carib Street. There is a process, persons who are doing cleaning of their home. They should inform Carib Street, there are the numbers, you can provide them with the numbers as well. So, I think most residents already know how to contact Carib Street. They should call Carib Street, make their request and then there's an assessment done. If it is less than half a load, there's no charge. If it is half a load, there's a fee and a full load. We do not collect materials such as construction material, gravel, sand and that type of thing. We ask them to make their private arrangement. But we do notice that since the clean-up campaign, many residents have been putting out continuously. We have had our work supervisors, our little wardens, our public health inspectors speak to residents. It continues. So unfortunately, I think that the little wardens will really now have to go out there and continue finding people. Which is not always the desired approach, but because of the situation that we find ourselves in, they would definitely have to do so. But I cannot urge members of council to speak to your worshippers and let them do the, follow the correct procedure as outlined.
Thank you, Dr Mordali. You know, members, in the clean-up campaign is coming to an end. I think this weekend will be the last of the exercise. And we need commendation, need to go out to our very own Jared Rambarak, who has been spearheading the campaign together with the minister's team. So you want to send a commendation to him. And as well, Dr Mordali, in my analysis and in investigations with the stakeholders involved with the project, I understand that San Fernando is one of the outstanding corporation in the entire clean-up campaign. And I think we did extremely well. So commendation again should go out to the entire team. What exercise, the type of tardiness that would have occurred in other corporations did not occur in San Fernando. We were very efficient and effective with our duty and I would commend you and your team for doing so. And at the same time, again to congratulate the minister for this, for this exercise as we move on. We continue on, on, on page three. Homelessness continues to be a problem that we have to deal with. I know the deputy mayor had explained the rationale behind the exercise over the centre and the wharf. But as we get several calls to the mayor's office about homeless persons and their activities, some of them are attempting to sleep on the compound of the corporation. There's one at that building on the banstand and it drove the whole house permanent. There was a function here on Saturday, Saturday morning on the banstand. And there was a mentally deranged person perusing the entire banstand. And I don't know, Mr Remy, if we could make some sort of effort to curtail his behaviour. I know it's a difficult task, but just because he is up and down and they had some young artists doing a display here, young persons, students for that matter. He was abusive, expressive, you know, the type of language that we don't want to encourage. And he's up and down and there's a mental case, it's a difficult matter to deal with. But at least we can keep our eye outside here for this particular gentleman. He's usually based somewhere around the Mahatma Gandhi area, statue area there on a day-to-day basis. So just take a note of that, please. Let's continue. 3.5, the San Fernando Heritage Trust is something that I should inform members that we are working on that seriously to bring it forward, to see how we can deal with the matters of concern here. The library, San Fernando Library is something that we are looking at, restoration of the library, to bring it back to what it's supposed to be. We are speaking to analysts about it and see how fast we could work on bringing back the library to its prominence and its activity and service to the people of San Fernando. Page four. Wrecking service, Madam CEO. 3.7.1.
Your worship, we are still working on having the area cleaned where the vehicles would be towed to. And also, we have an auction coming up, so we need this space before we can, for the auction, before we can start bringing in vehicles here. I believe by the third week, what I'm looking at right now, that we should be able to start the wrecking service. And we would have to see about the contracts too and all of that with the exercise.
And the auction, the auction you're referring to is for the direct vehicles?
The direct vehicles which are there. So we are right now doing the heavy cleaning and then we have to lay out the vehicles in a numerical order. They are on the list for the auction to come in. He's supposed to be here, I think, is the second week in May month.
The vehicles on Carib Street will be included in the auction?
No, no, no. We would have to do a second listing of those in the Carib Street complex, which we have found to be unworthy and then send it to the central tenders board. And they would have to visit and then take the lead in recommending them for auction, for the auction block.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Page five. Six. Seven. And eight. Can we move on to announcements? Yeah. And Deputy Mayor, you can start if you have an announcement.
Good morning, your worship, members of council, acting CEO, Miss Russo, members of administration. I rise this morning with a very sad duty of some announcements in the passing. First off, I want to mention, Mumtaz Variety Store is an establishment that we've, most of us who are older have grown up with and that everyone knows. The proprietor, the man who started the Mumtaz Variety Store, which is synonymous with Mukerapo Street and San Fernando, and in years past was as well known for carnival supplies as Samaru's and so are now. Passed on Easter weekend, on Saturday, the 15th, and was buried on Sunday, the 16th. Also, I would like to mention the passing of Mr John Yates, who was born in 1932 in the United Kingdom, in England. He was a Yorkshireman, an avid yoter, met and fell in love in England with the daughter of our former mayor, Beryl Archibald Critchlow, who was mayor from October to November 1950, Marjorie. He died on the 3rd of March 2017 and was laid to rest. He is well known, he was an avid yachtsman and his yacht Domani was well known throughout the yachting circles in Puerto Spain. And he was also a physiotherapist who worked with a number of prominent persons, including our former Minister of Health, Emmanuel Hussein, as a young child, who was a polio victim and survivor to get him up and walking and active. I'd like to also mention the passing of Kalawati Gokul, also known as K, who was the chief registered nutritionist of Trinidad and Tobago under the Ministry of Health when she retired. She passed on the 18th of April 2017. And although she was not from San Fernando, she was my aunt. And it is with great sorrow that I mention all of these that have passed. I thank you, your worship.
Namaskaram to the councillors or the district.
Your worship, we just paid homage to Jared Ramharrap, but unfortunately for him, his brother died the week just before Easter. And we have also former councillor, Carol Coffey-Dowlat, who passed away. And we have a nurse, a former nurse at the San Fernando General Hospital, Glenda Caesar. Her funeral is this afternoon. Thank you, your worship.
And I would just like to add to the unfortunate passing of our former councillor, Carol Dowlat-Coffey, who served here and sat on the other side. I think she sat exactly where councillor Alderman Samuel is sitting. Now that you will follow her in any way, so. But she, she served between 2003 and 2010 and I was here as a old man at that time and worked with her. And I must tell you, as you will know, Alderman Samuel, being the sole opposition member here could be difficult. But like former councillor Coffey, Dowlat-Coffey, you have the same sort of demeanor and attitude. She was a team player and she worked with us because to sit with nine PNM councillors and two old men and be by yourself, it could be, could be a daunting task. But she had a very liberal mind in the way she went about her activities and her, and her assignments as a councillor. And she worked with us, you know, for the benefit of the city of San Fernando. It was never that she was COP and we were PNM, we were team players. At times when we would, from time to time, take a little jab at her and hit her, a little lowish blow. She'll always respond and say, listen, 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 we, you not hear about that, you know, in a very mature way. And I actually admired my old Carol for her demeanor, her attitude, her way, her attitude towards life. We surely will miss her and she also brought her legal profession, her legal mind to the table when we had to deal and deliberate on matters of legal matters. So we'll miss her and let's all stand for a minute's silence. The souls of the faithful departed rest in peace and rise in the glory of heaven.
Your worship, we have three pieces of correspondence. Sorry, sorry. The first one is from the Maloney in Loving Care, who visited the, visited the Lady Shaw at Harris Promenade, they said. On Monday, 13th of February 2017, children, teachers of the above school and had the unique privilege of a closer viewing of the Lady Shaw at the above address. We wish to thank you for your very gracious gesture of cleaning and clearing the ravines, the premises in order to accommodate the children. The weather was fine and the joy in the children's faces as they found themselves in such close proximity to what they told us was used in transportation in this country as an engine tow train. One little lad was glee, with glee exclaimed that he had a choo-choo train and I am sure that he would never forget this experience. We pray for your continued guidance in the completion of the project for the beautification of Harris Promenade and hope that someday the amphitheatre that is there will be put to solid cultural use that children, in fact, these children growing up can enjoy. May our Lord guide you in all your endeavour as you seek to project our cultural stance in a positive way. This is a thank you from the Princess Town Regional Corporation, launch of the national clean-up campaign in the Princess Town, Princess Towns region. The above subject refers, on behalf of Princess Town Regional Corporation, we would like to express our gratitude for the participation and assistance rendered by the municipal police attached to your corporation. We appreciate your support towards making this venture a success. Last piece of correspondence is from the National Library and Information System Authority. We wish to express our gratitude for your support rendered in our fit-for-litacy, fit-for-life walkathon and health fair held on Wednesday, the 5th of April 2017 at Harris Prominade, San Fernando. Your contribution is greatly appreciated and we look forward to partnering with you in future endeavours. Yours respectfully, Radhika Ramutheer Suneerain, Mrs Liberian IV. And if I may say something, Mrs Ramutheer Suneerain, her mother once worked here as a secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Committee reports acceptance. Finance planning and allocation of resources.
Your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of admin. I rise to move a motion for the acceptance of the finance planning and allocation of resources for the meetings held on the 31st of January, 7th of February, 21st of February, 7th and 14th of March 2017.
Second.
Your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of admin, I beg to second.
All in favour? Any against, any abstention? Motion is carried. Public health?
Your worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen. I, Alderman Johannes Dine Ryan, wish to move for the acceptance of public health committee reports of meetings held on 7th of February 2017 and 7th of March 2017.
Your worship, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration, I beg to second.
Any objection, any abstention? All in favour? Motion is carried. Physical infrastructure.
Mr Mayor, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration. Monri Poonavat, rise to move a motion for the adoption of the report of physical infrastructure and transport committee report of the meeting held on the 14th of March 2017. I so move.
Second.
For the acceptance, yes. Your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of admin, I as well, would like to second for the acceptance of the report, the physical infrastructure report.
All in favour? Any against, any abstention? Motion is carried. Personal.
Good morning, his worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration. I rise to move the motion of acceptance to report of personal committee held on the 14th of March 2017.
Second.
Mr Mayor, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration. Monri Poonavat, rise to second the acceptance of the report.
Any objection, any abstention? All in favour? Motion is carried. Committee reports for adoption, planning and development.
Your worship, members of administration, members of council. Councillor for Coquettie-Roubaix, rise to move the motion for adoption for the report of planning and development committee report, meeting held on the 14th of March 2017.
Can I have a second, please?
Your worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration. Maribella West, do second.
All in favour? Any abstention, any against? Motion is carried. General purpose?
Your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of admin. I move for the adoption of general purposes committee report meeting held on the 14th of March 2017.
Second, please.
Your worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration. Deputy Mayor and councillor Felizfo Isipero, rises to second.
Any objection, any against? All in favour? Motion is carried. Education and youth development.
Your worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration. I rise for the adoption of the education and youth development committee report of meeting held on the 14th of March 2017.
Pleasant morning, your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of administration. Maribella East is pleased to second.
Any objection, any abstentions? All in favour? Motion is carried. Parks and institutions. I have a second, please.
His worship, Madam CEO, members of council, members of administration. Felizfo West, beg to second.
Any objection, any abstention? All in favour? Motion is carried. Arts and culture.
Your worship, Madam CEO, members of council, members of administration. Springville Paradise, move for the adoption of the arts and culture report for the meeting held on the 7th of February.
Can I have a second, please?
Your worship, members of administration, members of council. Councillor for Coquettie-Roubaix, beg to second.
Any objection, any abstention? All in favour? Any against? Motion is carried. Public claims and liabilities.
Your worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration, members of public. Good morning, I, Alderman Shane Samuel, rise to move the motion of acceptance of the report of public claims and liabilities committee report of meeting held on the 7th of February 2017.
Can I have a second, please?
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen. I, Alderman Johannes Dine Ryan, do second.
Any against? Any abstention? All in favour? Motion is carried. Sports and social services.
Good morning, your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of administration. I rise for the adoption of the committee report of meeting held on the 7th of February 2017 for sports and social services.
Can I have a second?
Your worship, acting CEO, members of council, members of administration. Maribella West, do rise to second.
Any against, any abstention? All in favour? Motion is carried. Security and disaster management.
Your worship, acting CEO, members of council, members of administration. Maribella West, do rise for the adoption of the security and disaster management committee report of meeting held on 7th of February 2017.
Can I have a second, please?
His worship, members of council, Madam Acting CEO, members of administration. I, Alderman Thomas, rise to second, send motion.
Any abstention? All in favour? Motion is carried. Tourism and heritage.
His worship, members of council, Madam CEO, members of administration. Our councillor, Felizfo West, Lamine, is, committee meeting reports in 7th of February.
Can I have a second, please?
Your worship, Madam Acting CEO, members of council, members of administration. Maribella East, so second.
Any against, any abstention? All in favour? The motion is carried. Well done, members. Petitions.
Your worship, there are no petitions to.
Any, any motions?
There is one motion, motion to rename Angela Church Street to Church Street, which will be carried by councillor Segrim. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and Madam Acting CEO. We have a motion to be read. I, councillor Arnold Segrim, representative of the electoral district of Maribella East, move on the 25th day of April 2017 that whereas the office of the ombudsman has raised concerns regarding a particular street located in Gropol Lance, Maribella, and whereas this street in question has always been maintained by the San Fernando city cooperation, and whereas the. the assessment sheet originating from the district revenue office identifies the street in question as Angela or Church Street, and whereas this street was originally called Angela Street as indicated by the cadastral sheet for the area, however, Angela Street was never utilized and the street was referred to as Church Street, and whereas this designation indicates that the street can be called either Church Street or Angela Street, but not Angela Church Street as is being done by the corporation. It is therefore recommended that the street shall revert to the name which it had been referred to in the past, that is Church Street, and whereas on Tuesday, the 11th day of April 2017, the general purposes committee under whose jurisdiction such matters fell, has considered the representations made and recommended that the San Fernando city council accept same. Be it resolved that this council name the street described herein as Church Street, I so move.
Your worship, members of council, Madam Acton CEO, members of administration, I beg to second.
Do we have any abstention, any objection to this motion? The motion is presented, all in favour of this motion? Any against? The motion is carried. Personal explanation?
No personal explanations, your worship.
Any questions?
No questions, your worship.
Other urgent matters?
Your worship, the only thing of importance I have here is a request from the Point Forte Borough Corporation, which we can deal with in this statutory meeting, asking for permission to put a banner at the corner of Todd Street and Rioense Highway to commence in 21st... Well, the activities have started already for the anniversary activities, which started on the 21st of April and culminating on the 7th of May, and the banner will be hung on the fence of the Skinner Park.
They will like us to hang the banner?
Yes, from the 3rd of May, because on the 3rd of May they are having their is-we jars. The size of the banner is 10 feet by 3 feet, and as with any other requests like that, we would ask them to secure it in such a way that there is no danger to the public and they are to remove it immediately after the programme takes place.
Bearing in mind, Madam CEO, that we have a policy in terms of how we treat with banners and things like that, so this is then we have to refer to a committee meeting maybe next week for certification.
Yes, your worship.
Members, at this time, we usually use this forum to address critical issues that impact on the city, or we need to talk about how we improve life in the city, but at last my meeting started, a dialogue conversation was critical matter of fact, not just San Fernando, but the entire nation, that has to do with crime. And as we look and really people on a daily basis, questions are being asked, what is the solution to crime and how do we treat with it? It is my belief that the inherent nature of our city and communities in San Fernando has relatively shielded us from the seemingly cancerous scourge of crime that is gripping our nation. However, we, as San Fernandians, cannot take this blessing for granted. It is necessary that we tackle this issue in a truly holistic manner, and in doing so, only then can we begin to earnestly contribute to the reduction of criminality in our country. The public perception of crime, which has now reached intolerable levels, not only in respect to the nature of these crimes, but the mounting social and monetary costs to society, must prompt us to ask, what do we personally identify as crime? How do we define and categorize them so that we can begin to address each cause? What we may find is that the real issue is white-collar crime and political crime, such as crimes against persons, as the case with this state of emergency of a few years ago, that saw thousands of young men wrongfully arrested, crime against property, such as the Kliko and Hindu Credit Union scandals, and crime against the dominant moral code. These crimes that sometimes go unnoticed and are now threatening to steal the soul of our nation. The nature of these crimes often leave us questioning our values. In today's society, conmen are no longer demonized but glorified. Their ability to cheat the system and succeed is seen as a triumph over injustice. Our moral code was the guiding compass that for so many years bound us as a nation and a community. Now, in the face of a disrupted society, many are now forced to adjust their moral compass to able to provide for themselves and their families. It is here we see the mutagen that has affected our society. Political crimes are offensive, involving avoid acts of omission, which prejudice the intentions of the state, government or political system, involving bribery and perjury, which the present government must deal with, in addition to the wanton abuse of state enterprise funds perpetuated by high-profile lawyers exploiting the system. In light of this, we must ask, who will guard the guards? Over time, the perpetrators of these crimes have become bolder. Their insatiable greed has grown to such proportions that it now affect us all. Practitioners of our ever-growing neoliberal ideology have not only robbed our nation of money, they have now augmented society to a point where the environment, both social and political, now suits their purposes explicitly. The air of confusion and unrest has taken away compassion, selfishness and empathy. Instead, we see the instigation of class warfare, putting the middle class and the less fortunate against each other, while corrupt individuals of the upper echelons reap the rewards of this confusion. Political deals made behind closed doors now erode our community bonds. A litany of corrupt deals are intermingled among the many new stories. A prime example is the recent scandal of the Tobago fast ferry. The revelations made at the GSC hearing by the officials of NGC were startling to say the least, and someone should be held accountable. Questionable multimillion-dollar contracts seen in the Point Forte Highway and in today's express, Mark Basson's investigation of the 60 billion missing. That was defrauded from the National Energy Corporation five and a half years ago, and the matter remains unsolved. And so many more dubious political decisions that now exact a heavy skin societal cost, when will it end? All the while, these white-collar crimes continue to reap the financial rewards of their corrupt deals. Now that the pieces fall into place, we can safely ascertain that the root causes of our current situation are a litany of political and white-collar crimes. What is the way forward? For us to move forward, we must gather our resolve. Now is the time for us all to no longer be observers, but active participants in the long journey to taking our country back. We must hold true to our national motto, together we aspire, together we achieve. We must aspire to be a better society, and to do so, we must act as our societal guards. Currently, the brunt of this responsibility lies squarely on the shoulders of our government. We must all rediscover our moral bearings and lend our support to the government, as to root out the cancers of white-collar and political crime that is left unabated, will act as a scourge upon our land. I ask all citizens of San Fernando for us to start right here in our city, to identify when you see wrongdoing, bring it to the attention of the authority, be the guardian of your community, city and nation. I thank you. You know, we are pressed with finances to deal with Carnival, and the team made an attempt this year to go out into the public and ask for assistance. We had a reception here sometime in January, and we asked private sector to assist us to overcome our challenges for Carnival. And a very good citizen of the city, Mr. Gary Kalishon, is here this morning, and he's going to take care of the prizes for the junior Carnival bands. I think it's a sum of 16,005 he'll be giving out to the bands this morning. I want to congratulate him, because as we speak, we have not received our prize money from NCC as yet. The promises are being made, checks are somewhere in the preparation process, but our good citizen has come forward, and we want to, as we just acknowledge him, and congratulate the winners. And at this point, I'll ask the chairperson of the Carnival Committee to announce the awards, and I'll ask Mr. Kalishon to come forward and join us within the horseshoe area here. And I will stand next to you.
Good morning. We have small bands, non-school small bands, third place, June Christopher. Second place, bandleader Valerie Noriega. First place, small bands, Adlin, bandleader Adlin Mitchell. Any medium band categories? Non-school? Second place, medium band, Morgana Beach from Beach and Associates. Medium band, first place, Anra Bob from Anra Bob and Friends. Large band, band House of Jackie, bandleader Jacqueline Kounou. Jacqueline looking a little different today. And band of children's band of the year, San Fernando Carnival 2017, bandleader Anra Bob.
No, I ain't seen it.
Want to see red mic?
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
So, your worship?
Yes, sir.
Regarding the cleanup campaign, mention was made about people still dumping. I remember the minister saying that civil cooperation was supposed to take all the slack as regarding the... You heard in your meeting earlier today, speaking about putting little ones now, people putting out white plates? Why is this?
White plates? Well, I mean, the citizens have, I mean, it's a culture, there's white plates, we have seasons, we have Christmas, you have Easter cleaning, you have Diwali cleaning, and then it is normal to put all those white plates, but it has to be done in a structured and organized way. The cooperation out there, the various departments that deal with these matters, we call the cooperation, we have white plates, and when we are really structured, I think what the minister referring to is people just put, habitually dumping garbage and trash outside of their premises, which can be unhealthy and create little problems of others. So it has to be done in a regularized and organized way, and you can call the cooperation and get a number and we will facilitate it.
Now, you made mention about, the committee members talking about only half routes of the... The minister did say that the regional cooperation was...
Well, we are supportive, I mean, I mean, that initiative by the minister, it gave us an opportunity to address some of those issues in terms of the ball of peace and so, the fact that the awareness created by this cleanup campaign, it sensitizes the public on what needs to be done and how you go about it. So we will be decapulating that and maximize some the opportunity to address all those issues, and as the doctor said in his presentation this morning, it's an ongoing exercise, we will continue to address this matter, so it wouldn't have a backup, particularly at peak season, which is Diwali and Christmas, which is pending.
So is that burden to the regional cooperation?
Not necessarily, I welcome the cleanup campaign, I want to commend the minister for that initiative, because what he did, it kind of fast-tracked the whole process of picking up moving garbage and collection of that. So, and also through the promotion aspect of it, there was an opportunity to address these issues and speak to the public on what needs to be done.
You made mention in your meeting earlier about crime, a lot of white-collar crime.
Well, yeah, because you know, you're looking at this matter, it is an ongoing concern of citizens, we're looking at the waste of lives of young people, and the emphasis is placed so much on organized murder, put it that way, and it been all here and there. But there's another aspect, another you mentioned, the crime discussion, which is criminality and criminal crime, the white-collar crime, and what, how that belongs to the people, and we not paying attention to that. And you talk about the large sums of money, which puts pressure on the state, on the country and economy. Today's state, for that matter, is an ongoing matter with investigation by Mark Basson on page four of the express, talking about 60 million dollars that disappeared in account under National Energy some time ago, five and a half years ago, that matter occurred, and they're still trying to trace money in Dubai and accounts, foreign accounts all over. I mean, at the end of the day, you put several of those matters together, and it's almost one-third of our national budget. You look at the, when National Gas did a presentation to the General Select Committee last week, we were stunned by what we heard. I mean, it was, I was astonished by the information coming out there, how are we going to deal with these matters? So those kind of crimes are impacting on the country, but the focus should not be on somebody that got caught for two-stick marijuana, or somebody who did something because there's some domestic abuse, or whatever, there's money inside it, or racial events. So, the real crime has to be the political crime and white-collar crime, we must have the will to solve these problems by being better citizens and by understanding what our responsibilities are as good citizens. and by understanding what our responsibilities are as good citizens.
You made mention about corruption, members, if members, which is knowing of any irregularities, especially corrupted things and practices. What is your corporate, what is you as mayor of San Fernando going to be doing?
Well, I made a special appeal this morning, a little start process. Probably going to get back on our behalf as citizen, so you go to have your licence renewed and somebody will say to you, well, listen, you can actually donate 40,000, but it will cost you X amount of money. You report that matter. It has to start somewhere. As small as that may be, as a start as a beginning, we could do that. You have police officers who may want to fast-track, or may want to go fast-track a court matter, or may want to reduce evidence by, by way of a bribe or a case maybe. You report these matters to the authority and we can work with those things. You have people giving tickets on the, on the street, police officers, warning, traffic warnings, who want to give you a blast and say, say in a moment to, in our people to for not paid charges of other case maybe, we can address those matters, but you report it to us.
And what, what is the city corporation or what your corporation going to do about that? How you're going to handle?
As I said before, as I said before, you reported to the relevant authority. I'm asking the citizens, let us start, let San Fernando be a vehicle, let's be an example to others. Let's be exemplars, how we go forward. We are going to start with dealing with white collar crime. You want to get a child into school, a principal may say to you, well, I can bring your child in, but it will cost you X amount of money. It's rampant for society. We have to stop these things. If you are appointed to work on a board and you have a responsibility to act as a board member, you have a wish or an oath, you honour your oath.
Now, I know you all, you got some corporate citizens this morning to some 16,000.
16,500.
16,500 contribution. You made mention that you didn't receive money. You want to elaborate on that?
Well, NCC do have the financial challenges. We are, we are paged away and we have, we have to support where we can. We have, we want to corporate citizens and ask them to come forward and they are coming forward. We have to wait. It's the first time we have had that problem. We have, we have not received monies for the rentals in our park for years. We spoke with chairman about that. I mean, administration come and they go and they have not addressed that matter. We are trying to have that clarified, but in the interim, we have to do what we have to do. We have a responsibility to honor our commitment, our masqueraders. They have made their contribution, they have made their sacrifices, they've put all their money and they should be compensated. And we do what we can on our end to ensure that we honour those commitments.
So what is the reason for not getting your money?
NCC seem to have financial challenges in terms of, I am not too sure what issues are. We have not gotten a report from them. All we've told you that the money will be a bit late incoming and we are waiting.
Any gains you want to add regarding your city?
Well, I think cities on track. We have a committed team of councillors who understand what their challenges are and we are working with the city. We're going to do a mid-year review. That's coming up in a couple of weeks. We are asking for the projections for the rest of the years. We can know where we are financially and how we go forward.
My mayor, a situation happened on Sunday night, a petrol train. And you know just adjacent to, San Fernando is just adjacent to the petrol train. Oil seeping into the, into the sea and there was a lot of pollution. What, what, like I say, as regarding that, how affects your San Fernando fishermen and environment?
Well, well, in terms of starting with CBA, just talking about, about fish, fish folk, as you mentioned earlier. But there's a matter for the EMA, the EMA are the protectors and they're the ones to put measures in place to ensure that these, these breach of, of regularities don't occur. And you again, ever so, you know, matters like that in Point Forte, where now in San Fernando is coming home. I'm not a part, some kind of a person, a guardian of a burial. If that is so, and I mean, I haven't heard anything officially about that. It was affecting citizens, once affected them. I'm going to get a report today, so Tuesday. And I've not heard anything from Citizens Call again and saying that, so what's happening? But if it does, we definitely will ask any entity to be.
We had a tour at sea, I mean, with officials and we saw a lot of oil. I mean, it's out there and it was expected to come back on shore.
Sure, certainly.
Yeah, we, we can't predict, but what does the San Fernando city corporation has in place to ensure that shorelines are?
That's again, it's a area matter, but of course, our public health department will be looking at it and keeping tabs on, 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 in terms of what's on there, she may come to it, what kind of health issues come to it. And of course, they will do whatever they have to, make measures to ensure that the citizens are protected.
Any answer? Any other?
There's being asked about Pantrinigo, is it Pantrinigo? And what's happening with this tea bar fraternity? This tea bar fraternity, they also have their challenges in terms of the, the, the management of, of financial affairs. I'm not involved at that level anymore. However, as a bystander, as somebody interested in the art form, I'm very concerned about, about. I just came back from a tour where we were performing abroad and I understand the benefits of, of touring and, and, and the instrument. Because as we speak in trade, I, Spanish community communities, whereas abroad, Spanish is in the, in the, in the municipality circuit. So it's reached another, another level there. Let's hope that the coming months that Pantrinigo will resolve their matters with the membership and move forward. Because before we blink our eyes, Carnival will be back with us again, Carnival will be back with us again. And we don't want to be approaching a carnival season trying to determine who the president is or who should be the executive or not be the executive. We have some time now to resolve those matters. I hope fully the membership will come together and do what they have to do in the best interest of the art form.
Your worship, well, two weeks ago, you made mention your eternity record at San Fernando. So far, we haven't seen the record.
Well, we, the council took a decision to, 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 to bring back the record based on, on complete being brought forward to the council by members of the citizens of the city and in terms of what is happening. Of course, we have to address matters in terms of breaking, for instance, storage of vehicles, security of the vehicles, the whole process of, of security contracts, the particular breaking service, the collection of funds and all those different matters. So once this show is made, we have to look at the implementing process. And that's where we are right now. We secure the yard, there's some dirt that makes it there. We've got, we've got approval to auction these papers that have been done in the couple of weeks. So I assume that in the very near future, the record will be used to help the city of San Fernando.
How near future?
You see, we have the voting process. Let me ensure from the CEO, the general department, that if it's removed, we can start. I'm very interested to give you our response in that term.
So there's a delay?
There may be a short delay, sir.